Good evening, everybody. Sorry, Mary. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, May 21st at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Green Room. Let's begin with a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has Brian come?
No. Thank you, Dennis. Are there any visitors who would like to speak? All right. Hearing none, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add A5B. And the item would be the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. So that will come after the possible action on downtown auxiliary. Item number three, approval of minutes, May 7th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, the appointment, Nancy Adams is here and would like to be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for a term until 6/30/2026. Hello, how are you? Very well, thank you. So would you like to tell us what interests you about the economic development?
Well, I have lived here for about seven years now, and I just feel like this is the time to get involved and maybe do more. And I've served on civic and nonprofit organizations before, and I was also on the Board of Ed on old lines, so I'm kind of familiar with how committees work and politics. But I'm really excited about getting more involved in the town, and I have an empty nest now, and I just want to know how I can help, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
And I don't know if you know that you should visit Sharon and the town clerk and be sworn in before the first meeting?
Okay, no, I don't know about that.
All right, she's upstairs. All right. Thank you very much for stepping in. All right. Item number five, A, possible action on downtown auxiliary library location, and I believe we're going to be hearing from Dylan.
Correct, from the EDC, yes.
Okay. So Dylan is representing Economic Development Committee on this? All right.
Over here, so.
Thanks, Dylan.
And you should have a handout of his presentation.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Town Council. I'm coming to you today from EDC to give you a quick update on our downtown outreach program, a previous iteration of you created or tasked us with back in 2023 at some point. To date, we've gone and talked to a substantial number of the businesses located along the target area from Grove Street to the firehouse. I believe we've hit about 34 or 43 of those out of the possible 70. A lot of the feedback that we've gotten from these local business owners is that they really, really want to see an improvement in foot traffic in downtown. It's something that a lot of people want to see. Speaking as a member of planning and zoning and dealing with the POCD, everybody wants to see something happen with downtown. Instead of hiring or, you know, the town opening its own business to try to spur foot traffic, we seem to come up with a solution that would work amicably for everybody in having the library lease the first half of the building that was the old library. Just the first half, we've negotiated a great lease with the property owner that could be executed with your vote, and I think that would go a long way in the town, putting the first step forward to bringing downtown back to what it previously was. Growing up, going to the library after school, and then used to be able to go to Candies and Cream, Whimsical Wishes, Wings and Wheels Hobby Shop. Most of you probably don't understand the names of these businesses, but they were all in the Chips Plaza. We used to have it downtown at one point, and it was just great, getting people out and about. I think this is a really easy thing to do. We would be taking the money from our budget this year, end of fiscal year 2025, to pay for the lease, and yeah, I think that would go a long way to start a transition down there.
So just to expand on that, this collaboration is between the town, the library, and it also has benefits with Senior Connection. The Senior Connection would have seniors volunteering to man the library portion. And just to be clear, the library portion of this building will not be lending, so it would be for book sales and book browsing. They would have their inventory of used and gently used books there. They would offer programming there. The Senior Connection can use it for some programming, and we can also bring in some activities on, say, a Friday night, some music and things like that. In the back part of this location would be a cafe. To be very clear, it is completely separate, totally two different leases, but I want you to kind of envision an RJ Julia, it's a similar concept, where there's a coffee shop in the back, and there's a place with chairs and books and activities for people to do in the front, so they can, you know, purchase a coffee and come up and sit and enjoy their coffee, work on their laptop. It's also a workable space for people in the area who would need Wi-Fi, and unfortunately, as wonderful as our library is, the location is challenging for many to walk to. So this would give an opportunity to bring some of that back to our downtown area. So it's really a win-win. The funding, we have monies in our current budget that we have no, that we're not having, we don't have any plans for, so at the end of this fiscal year, it would go back into the general fund. So I think it really would say a lot for the town and businesses if the town invested in our downtown area. We are expecting businesses to do so, and if we're not willing to do that ourselves, what would, why should they? So this shows our commitment to that. It's a very reasonable lease. It would be for one year, and again, it's a collaboration that's really helping three groups in town, obviously the Town Council, the town, Senior Connection, and our library. So I hope you would consider this. It's unique to the community and to neighboring towns. No one else has anything like that either, so I think this might be an out-of-the-box trend we could be starting, so why not try it?
Anybody have any questions for Dylan or Michelle?
Yeah. How would that coordinate the rental with that coffee shop?
So the lease that we would have with 10 West Main LLC would explicitly have our square footage and our area designated, and then the coffee shop would have its own separate lease, separate entrance. The only space that they share is the hallway in the center and the bathroom, because they obviously need the bathroom access, but our lease will explicitly state that.
No, what I meant was like, opening of the library section of it, how does it coincide with the opening of the cafe? Are they going to be open pretty close together?
Oh, open hours?
Or, no, no.
Oh.
Just when will it be open? When's the coffee shop open?
Oh, so realistically, they were aiming for July 1st. The coffee shop is pretty much, the kitchens in area is pretty much set. They have someone to run it. It's just a matter of the logistics. Because it was Mal- Malone's. It was Malone's before that. The setup is still there, so they're just having to get some of the logistics and advertising and stuff pulled together.
So our lease would start July 1st until next year?
Yes.
They've been dying to open up a coffee shop down there for quite some time. We had our Chamber Business After Hours in December down there. The guy's a little hesitant to allow his wife to launch a business with no experience, so this will help offset her risk and mitigate his, and bring a populace to the restaurant as well.
And there's some photos, I don't know if you've been in this space in some time. It was my first time in this space. There's not a page number, but it's the third or fourth page. There are some photos of the inside space. It's a beautiful space. They're going to leave all the furniture for us, so, and he actually said the old library shelves he has in storage, so the shelving they'll put back up. The library would be able to contribute some funds for some of the startup, and, you know, there will be some cost associated with it, but like I said, we have those funds available.
So is, you know, I'm all for it, I'm just curious of maybe Mary Beth, of if they get a coffee, are you going to have an issue with them bringing around the books and stuff like that?
It's funny that you say that, and people have asked that from day one. When we opened up at 81, they were wondering why we allowed people to come in and have coffee with the books, because the first thing you do when you get a book at a library, you take it out, you go home, you sit at your coffee, your kitchen table, and you have your coffee. So no, we don't have any problem with people having coffee near books. And these are not going to be lendable books. Again, these are going to be books for sale. They're not precious, you know, and they're not outrageously expensive. They're very affordable, gently used, lovely books.
So they're books for sale? What if they wanted to sit down and read something?
Absolutely.
They could read it?
Absolutely.
It's going to be very casual, I think, and, you know, there's going to be a lot of interaction between Mary Beth and, you know, myself, the EDC, and so I think we're going to get the vibe, and if there's any issues that may come up or extended interest in things, we'll do our best to address it. But I think it's a win-win for us for one year to try it. The space has been vacant, so we're also addressing an empty storefront on Main Street for many years, and there's a lot of action happening there. 14 West Main has been actively getting renovated, new windows are going in, the siding's going up, so by, you know, doing this next door, it'll be more attractive to them as well. You never know, this may entice a business in the future to say, oh, this space is going to be available in a year, I'm going to put this on my radar now, and they may be able to get someone to lease it for a long term.
You got a question, Mike?
Yeah, my question, you may have answered it already, was you can manage it with existing staffing and the budget for the hours of operations for the satellite location?
So they're going to, we're going to have Senior Connection, people volunteer. The library is going to be able to plug in where needed, and again, we don't really, it's a work in progress, so we don't know what the hours will be to start, but we've discussed physically how we would separate the space, so that if, obviously, the coffee shop opens when the library's not open, people don't just wander in. We've addressed that with the property owner, so that will be, that will be not an issue.
Thank you.
Can the space also be used for senior programming?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Absolutely, for senior programming. Mary Beth could actually take some of the programming at the library and bring it back to the center of town, you know, meeting an author, things like that. It's a very quaint, intimate space. I was thrilled, again, I said it was my first time there. They have two working fireplaces. I can just imagine on a cozy weekend in the winter, it's, it will be a nice space to be in, and they're going to also set up a couple of workspaces, so people who need to get Wi-Fi and, you know, take a meeting, there's going to be a quiet corner for that. They have, the library has great ideas, so.
And question, the burning question, how many parking spaces?
Parking is, should not be an issue, because it was, it's been zoned, they've had a business before, and a coffee shop, so parking should not be an issue.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, thank you. Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Dylan, you have a question?
Maybe we should put it on the record, but are we going to do something about the landlord moving the food truck that's in the main parking area, or do you move it to the back?
Well, we could have, those are conversations we can have, absolutely.
Do you need a motion to reallocate this, or is this existing funding?
So that, so Bob, we were going to, we were putting that on a transfer for the next meeting, because we wanted to see what your feedback was. Currently, the funds are in professional services, so we do not, we don't have a line item yet for lease, so we can create that and move it into it, so it's very clear, so that if in the future this is something we continue, we would have that line item to fund.
Great.
So it'll be on the agenda for a transfer on June 4th.
Great. It seems like a win-win for everybody, between the Chamber, the EDC, downtown business, and the library. It's, everybody's on board, so great job.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
Me too.
Something different. I mean, I think it's, that's what we've been looking for, is out-of-the-box thinking, and I think getting this group together of people, we were able to come up with this. Kudos to, you know, to Hank and Dylan and the EDC for really leading the charge on this and bringing it to fruition, so I'm excited.
One other point to make is that if you saw, I think it's page four, there's feedback that came from the business community, there's 87 different comments that we have. This is just one of them. It's amazing what good ideas come from people when you actually ask them, right? This was not our idea, and so they're, hopefully Dylan will be back 86 more times.
Dylan, you're going to be a pro. He's thinking twice about it right now.
Can I attend her resignation now?
No, not happening.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a one-year lease agreement with 10 West Main LLC for 1,200 per month for the library auxiliary on Main.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thanks, Dylan. So now we are on 5B, and that is the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Application, which Michelle will address.
Okay, so this application Carrie sent over to me today. The window opened April 1st and it closes on June 30th. It is through T-Mobile. It is for small towns under populations of 50,000, and, yes, 50,000, and the award could be up to $50,000. And what the purpose, some of the purposes for this really align with the feedback from our Connecticut Main Street Program, you know, in doing some murals, adding some more artwork, pedestrian walkways, signage, equipment, also to fund some public events, so if we wanted to do a concert or something along those lines, and add streetscape. They really fall in line with the suggestions from the Main Street Program. The time crunch is that, I just got it today, and we want to, we're going to work with the EDC to designate one or two items that we want to apply for. It doesn't require a resolution from the Town Council. What we just need is the Town Council to authorize me to apply for it. I'm not here for the June 4th meeting, and then our next meeting was June 18th, so I wanted to make sure that you're okay with me doing this, so that we can get it going, because if by some chance, we put all this work into it. So I can't say to you for sure the one thing we're going to apply for, but I can assure you it is for economic development. It's going to be one of those criteria, and it does align with the suggestions and recommendations of the Connecticut Main Street Program.
And there's no matching requirement?
There's no matching requirement, from what I've read. It's a very, dare I say it, I asked Mary, I'm like, Mary, I think I'm missing something, is the, one of the most simplest grant applications I ever did see. So I don't think there's any harm in trying for it.
And we order, right, so that it?
This is quarter two. This is Q2 for it, so.
There's quarter, quarter.
Right. And it's a small enough amount where, because the town obviously would have to manage it, that it wouldn't be an issue for us, and it's something that we can execute quickly.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion?
I'm sorry, Chris.
Make a motion that Town Manager move forward with the, trying to obtain a grant from this T-Mobile.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, there are line item transfers from both the police and the building, Town Hall. Michelle, would you like to address it?
I have, Chief DeMayo is here to speak about that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and these are basically line item transfers from salary accounts with savings into them to police salary accounts. The major one being, police salary is full-time. We had three retirees, and per police contract, there are vacation and sick payouts, so those are never budgeted for, and in this case, they're quite significant. There's detail there, it's 87,000. We only need 80,000 into the police salaries account because of other savings. And then the transfers to the police overtime, overtime because of, you know, vacancies, holiday vacation, so we needed an extra amount in the overtime account, which is historically, the budget amount for police overtime is pretty historically low when you look at, compare it to 10 years ago. 10 years ago was two and a half times of what's in the budget now. So there are, it's kind of nice that it's salary account to salary account. There's no money in contingency, so that won't happen.
Did you want to address the Town Hall WASAM?
Yeah, the WASAM really is a transfer within the department. There was somebody out on sick time, which created overtime, so we're basically transferring 10,000 from the part-time account to the overtime account, so it's within the same department.
And just to note, we had two individuals out for a significant amount of time. This is a very unusual occurrence, so.
Questions? Questions?
What happened to the part-time one? Did we just have a little extra money there?
Well, that part-time, they were out, so we had savings there, which paid for the overtime.
Okay. Is that it for questions? All right, so is there a motion to authorize both transfers as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, let's see. Now we're on item number seven, authorizing resolution with State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, which Michelle will address.
Yes, so this, this resolution, this, the council already did back in, probably in March. Richard Brown was here at the time, so his name is on that document, so they have come back to us and said that since I am the town manager now, they need to have it redone to represent me as the town manager, so it's literally just changing the names on the document.
Okay. Questions there? No? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number eight, set the mill rate for fiscal year 2025, 2026. I think that's sort of self-explanatory, so I'll read the motion and we can discuss, if there is discussion. Motion that the Town Council hereby sets the rate of taxation on the taxable property of the town for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 fiscal year at 31.14 mills.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right. Number nine, the Finance Director's Report.
Yes, good evening. As you can see, the report hasn't changed much from month to month, which is, as far as Finance Director, is good for me, because that means finances have been pretty, pretty stable. You have the usual revenue expenditure statements for the fiscal year that we're in, 24, 25. They're dated at May 14th, 2015. I still expect savings on the expenditure side of about $400,000. Investment income will still exceed the revenue estimate of around 700,000, so that equates to 1.1. In total, it's going to be about 1.5 between the revenues and expenditures, which really helps, because remember, in this year, the use of fund balance was a little bit over $4 million. That's a lot. So that was the budgeted use of fund balance. That drops it down to the actual use of 2.5, which really helps when we get to the fund balance estimate for the, for the end of this fiscal year. And any reduction of that certainly helps. Investments are still stable, they're slowly decreasing, but no effect on our estimate for year-end on investments. Stiff rate went from 4.45% to 4.43%. I always mention the stiff rate, because that's the investment where we have the most monies, and it's a, it's a state fund. The interest rates typically larger than any other interest rate I can get, because the state made its own rules, so they have some investments in there that they can invest in whereby, as far as state statute, I can invest in individually anywhere else. So the stiff funds, always the, most towns have their, most of their funds in the Connecticut stiff fund.
And Bob, is the reason we have that 700 surplus because you moved money into that stiff account from?
No, it's just because when we, when we did this budget, the estimated amount for earnings on investments was low. So, I mean, you know, hey, that's good. We estimated 700,000, it's not, it's 1.4. Good for us, right? That's why we estimated a significant increase in the next year's budget, reducing the reliance on taxes. So it all, it all worked out quite nice. General fund, fund balance at 630, 25, really hasn't been any change in estimates. I expect it to be 23% of budget. Our policy is it shouldn't be below 20%, and that forecast is based on our budgeted use of fund balance of 2.6 million for the next budget year that we're going in. Now, we know, once you work on the 2026, 27, it's going to be nowhere near 2.6. It's going to have to, there's still some wiggle room there, a million something maybe, but that number's going to eventually go down, and our reliance on fund bounces is going to go to zero. That's just the way it is. So anyway, the estimate for fund bounce at year-end is still about 23% of budget, which is what we've been forecasting for most of the year. Contingency account, you know, still the same, 4,000. There's an ARPA fund report there. You see the balance available is a little bit over 200,000, so it's way down. Most of the funds have been spent. The funds that are still unspent have been obligated, and it's mostly on human services type things and water pollution. So, and I've completed the actual, the annual report to the federal government on ARPA, and for the most part, matches this report. So that's all completed. Next report is in the year, next March. Auditors will be here. Our planning session with the auditors for this fiscal year that we're in is first week in, first, second week in June. And on that subject, the auditors did hand out a fraud questionnaire that they do to all their clients. Some questions on that questionnaire is straightforward. Do you know of any fraud? Yes, I know. There are some that are, that you may need guidance on, and I think tomorrow I'll make a few comments on those areas and send them out to you, just as a, just as a guide.
The questions that we could use guidance on are the attestation to the controls, internal controls with regard to risk and fraud.
Right, right, because usually, you know, councils, they may have a report to them on internal controls, but they're not actively involved, so those are the types of things that I'll make a comment. You know, the auditor is, one of their first things when they come to speak to us before the year starts are internal control questionnaires to me, so I can kind of like give you those type of comments. So really, it's a responsibility of Town Manager and Finance Director.
So they did give us an assessment last time the auditors reported to us. They do it when they give their report, I think. They do it when they give their report, I think, at the end of the calendar year, we get that report. And in that report, there was a couple of areas where they recommended that we tighten things up a little bit.
Yeah, I think that was on the Board of Ed's side, and they've addressed, they've addressed those, those items. I've been speaking with the Board of Ed Business Manager, and they've been actively addressing them. So anyway, those questions that are a little confusing, I'll make a few comments on them.
Thank you.
Did that go to everybody? Because I don't, I don't think I got that.
I got it.
Yeah, it went to everyone.
I got it, yep.
It went to the, like, it went to the Town Council group that set up, so you should be on it, Chris.
I think it was last week.
Maybe a couple, if I, I think I sent it, it was a couple of weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Oh, two weeks ago, all right.
Okay.
We can resend it.
Yeah, I'll hear it.
Found it?
There it is, yeah.
Any questions for Bob?
Yeah, that undesignated fund balance of 23% as of the end of June 30th, 2025, is that taken into account the 1.5 million that more that we might dump in there?
That takes into account the estimate of expenditures and revenues, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, if we actually used the budgeted use of fund balance, it would be, it wouldn't be that attractive.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Bob. Item number 10, the Town Manager's report.
Okay. Okay, so we received, my last report I showed you, we put out to bid for the reval, and we received two bids back. We went with Vision, they came in slightly lower than the other company, and this is we've used, we're currently using. So the bid got awarded to them. We hired a new part-time tax clerk, Roseanne McNulty. She's a Clinton resident, so she's starting in the part-time position in, on Tuesday. And then we had a retirement in the Public Works Department for their clerk. She will be retiring, Donna will be retiring the end of June. So the way that the unions work is the jobs get posted internally first, so it's a domino effect. So we had a candidate who's already in the union apply for the job. She was awarded it today. So now her vacancies, she will have a vacancy in the Building Department in that, for the building clerk. So I will be posting that position early next week internally and then externally, and it just keeps moving on. So very busy on that front, but all, all great people, and we're very excited that they're going to be moving around and helping other departments. I shared with you a little while ago and a hard copy of the tax mailing letter. I got some feedback from a couple of members of the council. I've made some adjustments to it. We are in quite a time crunch with this due to, we couldn't really do anything until the budget was passed, and the mailing has a quick turnaround. For early next week, I have to get it to the printers. So I revised it, I sent it to you. You can look at it tonight. You can send me some feedback tomorrow if you feel that there's some additional edits that need to be made to it. But I would need to have a final, you've already decided we're going to do it, but a final draft, preferably by Friday, would be ideal. But I know that Brian tweaked it a little, like the formatting and things like that, and that was helpful, and so take some time to review that and let me know, please. We are, the chief, myself, Todd, and Mike are addressing some of the concerns of the Beach Park Bridge closing. The residents have some concerns about that project coming up. And we found out today that they want to move a little sooner than anticipated, so we are working with them to get them where we need them to be, and we are also trying to get the appropriate information to address the concerns that they have regarding safety concerns about pedestrians, traffic concerns, environmental concerns about flooding and things like that. So I want to, you know, first and all, thank the team that I have, because everyone has really taken their area of expertise and are addressing that. We're putting together a frequently asked question sheet, and we have the contacts for the associations pretty much that live down that area, and some of the residents who are, who are the most vocal, we will work with them. We have their email addresses to get that information out to them and try to ease some of their worries and take some of their suggestions and see if we can implement them to make the inconvenience of having this bridge out minimal. But it is a project that has to take place, so we are aware of that. We have had some workshops about the library and that library renovation. So based on the last Town Council meeting, there was a discussion about the difference between a presentation and a workshop. So what we have scheduled is on June 4th, a presentation from the library. I sent all of you a list of those areas of focus that this presentation will be on. I'm more than happy to send it to you again, but the areas we'll focus on explicitly. It will talk about the total cost of the project, a cost breakdown by area, so you'll know how much it costs to renovate the library, specific rooms, the furnitures and fixture costs, the efforts the library is making in fundraising, and if there are funds available that have been raised through outside sources that they can contribute to the project. So, and then the mechanicals are something that we would need to discuss, and that would take place in the workshop portion, which would be something scheduled after the presentation. So June 4th, which is a morning meeting, Mary Beth will be here to present with her team. I'm focusing on those specific questions. Memorial Day is right around the corner, even though it feels like February outside. There is a lot happening here in Clinton, many wreath laying ceremonies and the annual parade. More information about the step-off for the parade and the locations for the wreath lengths can be found on our website. So I hope everyone can make it. We also received a notice from the State of Connecticut that our request for the military flyover has been approved, so that will be a nice addition to the ceremony. And then just a reminder that June 4th, I will not be here for that meeting. I know that I, on the morning meetings, I was doing an economic development update, and since I won't be here, I just wanted to mention two things. We are going to be holding a broker breakfast on June 17th at the Comcast Building. It is going to be run by the EDC and myself, and we are inviting local brokers from, obviously, Clinton and neighboring towns to come hear about what's happening in Clinton, what the direction we want to see Clinton go in, how they can be partners in, you know, accomplishing that, and getting some feedback from them that they've heard from businesses and people that they talk to about why they maybe haven't chose Clinton, and what are some things that we maybe can do to help make Clinton more desirable for businesses. So we're going to be having that breakfast from 8:30 to 10:30 on the 17th. And then a new tea shop opened at 23rd West Main Street called Salt, The Salt Leaf. They serve tea and other small little gifts and crystals and things. So I am planning on visiting them next week. And I think Carrie went last night, was it?
The Chamber.
Yeah, the Chamber had an after, after business hours. And she went and said it was, it was beautiful. It's beautiful outside, they've done a lovely job, it's very welcoming. So a lot of good things happening, and that is my report.
Okay, questions? No? All right, Chairman's report. I definitely want to focus on downtown, because improvements have been a priority for all of us, and we've been working on that, and it turns out with the POCD survey, it turns out it's a priority of a lot of residents, too. So it's very satisfying to see and hear some of the things that are happening. Pearson reuse, we've all worked on, and that's moving forward. The library annex, which we've had a hand in, I think it's great to have a hand in it, because we can't just talk about believing in it, it's nice to actually invest in it. And I'm awfully proud of that. I'm very happy to see 14 West Main, the neighbor, replacing the windows, and I stopped by and thanked the guys. I said, "On behalf of the entire town, we thank you." And, and they said, "It's been a long time, hasn't it?" And I said, "Yeah, it's been a long time." So they seem happy to be doing the work, too. There's a building that was purchased, I talked about that, 27 West Main, a couple weeks ago, they're already in there. Michelle is very determined and persistent, and she doesn't let it go when she doesn't get the answer that she doesn't want when it comes to certain properties. I went in and suggest, I don't think I'll go there. Okay, I'll keep going on. EDC has been fantastic, and Dale and you and Dylan and everybody pushing forward, they're really helping, and it's really getting done. The Chamber, they're great, great proponents of this town, and, and they're, they were at Salt Tea yesterday, and they're proud of this town, and they're proud of everything that they do, and they want us to, as Paul said in his invitation, you say that you want downtown to be improved, then we need to be out there and, yeah, supporting it, exactly. And all of that is good, and I'm very proud. I'm proud of all of it, and it's starting to look good in every little bit, in every little corner, so I'm happy to be here and part of that with you. And Memorial Day events, I look forward to that, because it's honestly one of the greatest days to be in this town, because it is such a small town feel, and everyone's together, and it's, it's a good celebration, and we'll all be there. So that's it for me. Council discussion?
I hate to beat this dead horse to death, but I'm going to keep beating it.
Do it.
When are we going to hear from the auditors about the Morgan School getting our money back?
It's physically here.
So the auditor was here Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We gave him everything we had. His instructions are, he's bringing some materials back to his office, and we're going to hear back in a week or two weeks. I expect some emails on materials that he's still looking for, and we'll look for them. But it, he's finished his audit on location.
He's been locked up in the Rose Room for three days.
Good.
He walked in with me this morning.
Been a long time.
And when I peeked in to look at him later today, he was covered, there was just those mailboxes, boxes everywhere. So he was, he was up to his articles, literally, in files. It's a lot of papers to go through.
Yeah, thanks, Bob, again.
Rob, you've done a great job of having different departments do presentations to us, and Rob Derry was one of the first ones down in the Marina. There were some improvements that were going to happen down there, do you have?
You know, it's interesting, you said that, he just sent me a picture today of them working, and, you know, I had printed it out, but then, I can read you the email. He sent a picture to me today with them renovating some of the planters, and we used some of the ARPA funding to purchase plants. So he wrote me actually this morning, "Good morning, I just wanted to provide you with a status update of the ongoing Marina improvement. Today, we're removing all the existing plants in the beds, along with the bulkhead, walkway, picnic table area in consultation with others. It was determined these plantings have been there for years, and we're need updating, replacing, replacing." Todd and his staff have been a great assistance to dropping off the dumpster and for us to use for old plants. I'm planning on working on installing the new plants by the beginning of Wednes, beginning next Wednesday. Our plan is to install numerous hydrangeas, knockout roses, and catmint to bring colors to the Marina. Thank you again for your ongoing support of the Town Marina." And they provided a picture of, like, them just doing the planting. So I think they're just starting to get, now that the weather's hopefully cooperating. I know that J&amp;M Dockside at the concession stand is crushing it. I mean, they've, they've really been doing phenomenal, and I think they're gonna, you're just gonna see continued progress down there, and I will continue to get updates and share them with you.
And how about the beach, the basketball court?
That's in progress, yes. We've met, we've got the layout all set. The contractor honored the price from the original quote they had given them. I think there was a slight increase, but not much. It was all within budget, and that project should still, should be underway. The beach house, they did some renovation there, that is at the final stages, and I know Bo is working, burning the midnight oil to get everyone. I talked to him last week, he has all his staff in place, getting them all trained. We are one of the few towns in the state that has full lifeguard. Most towns can't find lifeguards. We have plenty of lifeguards, which is, is safe, good for our residents. And yeah, we're, we're doing well. The Public Works Department is scheduled for, I think, on the 4th to give an update. They're one of the last departments, I think, and then there's maybe some in July. And then, is it July? I don't remember. I know we're at the end, like, we've, I sort of divided them up per month to have the departments come, so we can continue that and pick up where we left off, so you can get regular updates. That's the good stuff.
Well, I guess it's, it's a report, it's also a liaison report from Park and Rec, but the Clinton Invitational Soccer Tournament was this weekend. If you were trying to drive around, that's what was going on. But it's a real great success, I think. You know, basically what that is, is it's a soccer tournament for all the travel teams in the area, so like Old Saybrook, Madison, Westbrook, Wallingford, Weathersfield. So they all come in, they use the fields at Peters, at Elliott, at Indian River, and there's people everywhere. So, you know, I say it was a really great success, so that, you know, if you recall the way Park and Rec has a subdivision, if you will, called Clinton Soccer Club, so they run the whole thing. But whatever, I guess they pay their expenses, but then the profit goes back into a fund, back to Park and Rec, and I don't know if it has to be used for soccer or whatever, but, you know, I don't know what that number is yet, but I'm sure they made some good amount of money. But, you know, Public Works was there, you know, they have to get all the fields ready, they're driving around on carts, they got to clean up the garbage, so they're all working. The police, I'm sure, you know, really patience from them, because there's really not enough parking, so there's people parked all over the place. But, you know, I've said to the chief a million times, like, I think they do a great job of keeping everyone safe while also exercising restraint. Like, they probably could have walked around and gave everyone tickets and towed people, and that would have put a negative stint on everything, so. And I'm sure people were speeding around town and things like that, so, but they kept everything safe and were around, big police presence, I saw them all over the place. You know, the only, only thing I would say is, is that it's a huge opportunity that we have to, we don't have to, but we should figure out a way to capitalize on and drive the traffic downtown. Because I would say thousands, I mean, that might be exaggeration, but thousands of people flood into this town on Saturday and Sunday, and they're looking for someplace to eat. And I'm sure Glenwood Market makes a killing, but they don't know where to go. And so if we could drive them downtown, like, in the future, we'll probably forget, but next year, we should put signs up, and it's worth the investment to drive people downtown.
But we could team up with the subcommittee and have them do a mass mailing to the teams and say, "Here's a list of why you're here, here's a list of local venues, you know, even the shops, you know, places to eat."
Yeah, go shopping.
And things like that, because I'm sure many of them have siblings, and they need to keep them busy, too, and find something to do with them, so.
Yeah, but I just wanted to say, so Park and Rec, you know, DPW, police, fire, I'm sure had something to do, they, they had to have patience, because nobody knows they're not supposed to park in that parking lot, but it was a huge town effort, so, well done, everybody.
More discussion? Or liaison reports?
Briefly. Town manager already touched on, one of the biggest items on the police meeting last week was this very vocal group of people worried about the closing of that bridge, and they spent probably the better part of a half hour trying to get answers from the chief and stuff like that, which the chief... and stuff like that, which the chief and Michelle explained that really there was no contract signed yet. We don't even have a starting date at the time and things of that nature. So, you know, they were asking questions we couldn't answer, but they were adamant about, well, this, this and that. But it was handled quite well by the town manager and the chief. So hopefully, as Michelle said, they'll address it when the time comes. As far as the budget's concerned, chief did notice that, I want to emphasize, that there might be a little overage this year in the salaries and the overtime account, but he's doing the very best he can and he feels that 75% of that overage will probably be compensated for within department transfers or whatever to try to eliminate the impact to the town. On a lighter note, there's, we're opening up our sergeant's exam. There's 13 people eligible and 11 people applied, which shows that the overall morale of the department is quite high. Individuals want to move up and want to stay here in the town of Clint. And on a last note, our new officer has just completed, our new trainee, I should say, has graduated from the academy and of course, now we know he takes about a year of extensive training with our, with our officers. But that's it.
Anyone else? I have Brian's liaison report from the planning and zoning. The commission is expecting an initial draft of the POCV in July. The commission approved a special exception for a coffee and tea house at 130 East Main Street. And the commission approved an 830G affordable housing site plan to permit six residential units at 92 High Street. Okay. All right. And that's it. So if there's nothing else on liaison report, I'll look for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 15, adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion adjourned at?
Without opening the door.
836.
Oh, boy.
Thank you very much.